Welcome to Common Council on Finding and Zoning Commission Joint Work Session for the City of Bellevue, Idaho, Thursday, November twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. We're starting a little late, five thirty nine. I'm gonna kick this over to Brian Parker, our community developer.
Hi.
Thank you. Do a full call off of the council. Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Council President Gervani.
Yes.
Council member Shea.
Yes.
Council member Carrero.
Yes.
Council member Obenoff.
Yes.
Council member Leaky.
Yes.
Line, Council member Mahoney. Also online, who is not responding. Missing one. Who else do we have?
Councilor, you're good.
Okay, that's everybody. Yeah. Then Finding and Zoning Commission, Chair Kurtz.
Here.
Council member, Commissioner Lindberg is absent. Fisher Rootbelle.
Here.
Commissioner Hugely.
Here.
Fisher Weisen is also absent. Guess we should do notes for agenda compliance. Anybody wanna take a motion on the agenda? Yeah, I make a motion with the notes of the agenda compliance, criteria code seventy four two oh four. Finding the meeting notice posted in accordance with seventy four two oh four within forty eight hours. Prior to the meeting, the City of Bellevue, City Hall, the post office, and the city website, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Second, Matt.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Any conflict of interest on any of this? There's no action being proposed. So, you have a public comment? Anybody has anything not on the agenda that they'd like to discuss? Alright, so we'll go into work session. So, the business zones, text amendments, been in the works for a while, the... Specifically, we're already talking about the B business and LB slash R, limited business residential zones. But as a primer on zoning in general, we have six zones in Bellevue. Business, limited business, residential, transitional, general residential, light industrial, and light industrial mixed business. They are geographically based, so different portions of the city have different zoning classifications. I would use the title more as a theme than a explicit regulation. Just because it is a residential zone, for example, does not necessarily mean that it is only going to allow residential business. But then each zone, there are permitted initial uses and everything else is prohibited. Going to the business zone, uses permitted, there's quite a few of them. Amongst them, offices, gas stations, restaurants, bars, hotels, conditionally permitted, churches, auto sales, standalone parking lots, schools, hospitals, museums, City Hall, et cetera. Small engine repair, accessory to primary use, and then large buildings also require an initial lease permit. And then, everything you don't see on the screen here is a prohibited use in the business zone. Our dimensional standards on what the buildings can look like and how they fit on a lot. They're pretty loose in the business zone, it's forty foot maximum building height. Each individual parcel has to be fifty feet wide and six thousand square feet in size. Thirty-six thousand maximum building size. And then a ten-foot front setback if the building is larger than twenty-eight thousand square feet. I don't believe we actually have any of these in town. I did a quick looking around on the assessors. Atkins is just below twenty-eight thousand, and I think that's probably the largest building we have in town. The Larson Building, that's three stories, they're on Oak, or Main and Oak, is ten thousand square feet and takes up the most of the entire lot there, just giving you a frame of reference. And then we have the limited business residential zone, which is the west side of the bike path, Second Street, between Chestnut and Birch. Again, permitted and conditional uses, it's a little more limited. geared more towards residential and then very light commercial. Restaurants are permitted without a drive-through. Commercial zone where drive-throughs are permitted use. But, yeah, it's pretty like what's allowed there. Dimensional standards are much more consistent with the general residential zone, a twenty-five-foot front setback, six feet on sides and rear, three thousand square foot maximum building size on a standard six thousand square foot lot. If you have bigger than that, you go up an extra two hundred and fifty square feet per three thousand square feet of lot area, up to four thousand. Then we have parking requirements for pretty much everything, and a whole bunch of land uses that are identified for parking requirements. Some examples out here, residential dwellings take two per unit, accessory dwelling units take one per bedroom. Retail's one for five thousand square feet. Restaurants, bars and taverns are one through five thousand square feet. I put that in red, seems like a little bit of a problem to me that we're wanting to discourage drinking and driving. You have parking minimums on bars. Then, the dimensional standards on parking spaces are in this chart here. The main thing I wanna get on it is that take up two hundred, three hundred square feet per parking space, depending on how you configure it and how you calculate that. Which, given high land values, is expensive. Depends on how you kinda calculate it, but ten to thirty thousand dollars parking space. It could be going to more productive uses. And it encourages people. Keep that in mind as you're going through this. If you have any questions that will move along here, feel free to jump in. So currently, there are forty-six undeveloped parcels, based on the assessments data, of about fourteen acres worth of land. The picture you're seeing out here is the building footprints and nothing else. There are forty-two licensed businesses, I think, I did a quick spatial or joining of D S data with our license data. So it may not be exactly correct, but roughly forty. There are fifty-one residential properties in the two zones. Within the limited business zone, those are permitted uses, but they're prohibited in the B business zone, making them non-conforming, meaning that under the current code, they should go away.
How many of those are there, Brian? Not non-conforming uses in the business zone?
As far as residences, there's fifty-one total between the two zones. I didn't count out how many are in the business zone. I would guess it's upper forties.
Or maybe there's some, how many, how many businesses are in the business zone that are non-conforming?
Oh, non-conforming businesses.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, I didn't break that out. There are definitely a good amount, I guess, the wealthy job and the few more industrial uses. So generally, what you wanna see in your downtown, if you want to be self-sustaining and economically productive, you want a good amount of people, because people equate to customers, generally speaking. You want a variety of businesses so they can kind of feed off each other and ideas can be generated, shared across industries. You wanna be fairly, wanna be accessible for small businesses and startups, so you want pretty low barriers to entry. And then, you want it to be engaging and interesting and a place that people want to go. So. Then, I wanna make sure that we're also considering other things beyond just zoning code text amendments. We have an urban rural district that covers a lot of the business zone that we could potentially be tapping into as a resource partnerships with the private sector as well as just funding for projects if we decide we wanna do that. We are able to, we are not before, but we could by C code establish a business improvement district that would require a petition of over fifty percent of leave of the business owners or property owners in the business zone to form, and then we could assess those properties to provide type events, do beautification, improve the area generally, do a lot of different things with that funding. We also have a bunch of right-of-ways, I know I've talked to Diane about this, that are on the west side of Main Street that just kind of dive off into a cliff after they cross the alley there. We need alley access, obviously, to serve the businesses and what's going on behind those. But I don't know that we need nine of them. So I think there's opportunities, some insidio land there, we could do some interesting things with that. And then, just do some improvements to Main Street as far as road design, sidewalks, street lighting, street trees, that sort of thing. Make it a more engaging and their useful environment to have people come and be at. So, let's discussion, what do you guys wanna see for this text?
I have a question about, so when you're talking about improvements to Main Street and doing that, so would we have to then include I T D then on that conversation? Have a workshop with them to see what's actually feasible?
Kind of ordered the others in list of easy to hard. And I think getting I T D on board and engaged is a pretty good lift. That's a long-term strategy.
Well, I'll start it off. One, the reason why I ask that question is it's like, the business district is huge. And how much of it is business? And so it's like, I wonder, it's like, and this is, this is really not why we're here tonight, but maybe it is. How much of the, if we were gonna redo our comp plan and talk about the plan, the zoning of it, would that still be a business? Would we still incorporate that whole thing as a business district? Or would it change? Because I get the idea about, like, let's, you know, we wanna envision what this could look like over time, but it's like, okay, there's, there's so many, there's so many light industrial businesses in the business zone that I wonder, it's like, is it ever gonna change? You know, are we ever gonna have, what is, what is downtown look like for Bellevue? Because to me, it's like, it's, you know, a high percentage of light industrial and very few businesses. They're there, but they're kind of sprinkled throughout, and there's like, I was thinking the other day, I was like, okay, our true business area is like two blocks long. But here, it's like, you know, a mile and a half. So I, anyway, I throw that out there in terms of like, okay, what we're thinking now, but then also where we wanna go in the future. And, because I, you know, it'd be nice if we could, you know, over time, fast forward thirty years, what would this look like? But would it look much different? You know, or is it gonna look pretty similar? So I think it's like, I think that's something that we, I would just think that we should keep in the back of mind as we think about downtown.
To kind of piggyback on that or jump in on that. An idea I had brought up or thought about was, you know, creating a further business district delineation for that more core or historic section of business. And then having a more overarching business zone. So looking at adding additional zoning within the business zone that have like a core downtown or historic zone delineation within it to, you know, treat that section as more of our core business area. And then looking at how the other aspects of the business district function. Kind of breaking up the district a little bit more. Yeah, I'm kind of hyper focusing on, when we look at the alternatives to kind of increasing the value of this district, looking at the, the business. What's a part of the bid?
Business improvement district.
Business improvement district, kind of using those, but keeping them focused on where we're trying to create the most impact, most traffic, the most density for kind of our more business style businesses and less industrial focused stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think they're kind of similar.
Yeah.
Because I know when we went through this, the planning and zoning went through the, looking at the, you know, having apartments on Main Street or whatever, it was like, why are we, and this kind of maybe goes kind of intuitive, what I was just saying, but it's like, why are we just limiting ourselves to the business district? You know, because there's, there's a lot of light industrial on Main Street that it's unfortunate that there's not an apartment or multiple apartments on top of these new places that are just going in. And so, it's like, why are we limiting it just to the business district? Because they're there, and they're going to be there, and there's, I mean, a lot of vacancies out there, so it's like, what's, I think, I think we, are we, are we shooting ourselves in the foot if we just, just look at the business district? If we're gonna, what, kind of, it's also, what is our goal here? You know, we're not gonna solve the housing problem for our valley, but what is our goal in terms of additional housing in our community?
I wanna hear more about the what is the goal question. But as far as expanding to the light industrial district and other districts, I'm trying to manage and scope of this project to not rewrite the entire.
I mean, I had a very similar reaction to you though when the initial report had been brought to us. I felt like the scope of the text amendment was so small, based on how many businesses we had. And I had made a similar recommendation to go north and south with it, to include all forms of business because those lots could handle. Basically, the A D Us was the initial conversation where all this started, was adding A D Us to the business district. And, but it stopped, I think it spruce. And when we had initially looked at, I was like, why are we not taking it all the way north and all the way south? More of a highway business, looking at that and allowing a little bit of density there. So, I echo what you were saying, and so I think that was definitely something that I was confused when, where we ended up, kind of where we ended up, because that was my initial thought of, why aren't we going this direction with it? So.
And I think, you know, I remember our conversations at P and Z, John, where, you know, that it started, the, the whole reason why we started this was a very sincere effort for Bellevue to jump in and try and participate in this housing situation that the entire valley is in. You know, not just this valley, certainly it's broader than that, but, you know, for, for discussion purposes, you know, it was our intention, like our zoning ordinance, just, you know, the maximum density was a duplex. And that's just, and it still is. And so, you know, we, you know, took this on, you know, brought it through P and Z as best we could, just in a sincere effort to try and participate. You know, we were watching Haley explode with all this housing, and I just felt like we weren't doing enough. And so I wanted, you know, to, for us to put our heads together and just try and come up with some solutions. And, I mean, you know, obviously, two, three, three years, four years later, probably now, I mean, it's just, you know, it's a, it's a, it's snowballed. It, it's a, it's a big project, so, you know, but it's, but it's super important. I know Susie, I saw that she was on here, so I know, you know, others are interested in seeing how we can help, need a little bit.
In two thousand and twenty, we were pretty close. We had a pretty good plan, we had everything teed up, and then COVID hit and everything just kind of got dropped. And it got revisited a couple times, we went through a few different planners on this. And, you know, we wasted a lot of time and money on this, and this is why I brought it back, is to try to capture some of that money, so we actually have an end product. But now we're up against, I would say, we're up against now the cost of housing, cost of the W, but then our biggest challenge is gonna be A D Us versus our E D Us. You know, bringing in more dwelling units versus the amount of equivalent dwelling units for our sewer. How much do we have? How much can we grow? And if we do it in our business districts, how is it gonna affect our current developments going on and future developments? So, you know, it's a great time to talk about where we wanna go, where we wanna put the dwelling, where we wanna put our business, where we wanna keep our industrial. And are we gonna keep things legacy, or as businesses change over, are we gonna have them come back into compliance in certain areas? And so, I really don't have a huge final goal. I mean, I, I think I want Bellevue to look more than like just the working-class town that everybody drives through and doesn't stop in. I think we have an opportunity to really take advantage of the gateway city into not only Sun Valley, but also into the Sautus. And we should be capturing that. We have a lot to offer. We have some great business owners, we have some great community members, citizens that really care about our town and how we're gonna grow. And I think this is a first big step that we've been talking about for a few months, trying to get this together, me and John. And so, if Brian took this together, you know, I think we should look at the high reach. What can we actually accomplish, or in which direction we wanna go? And this doesn't have to be the end all moving, we can have another discussion, and this will develop over the next few months, and as we move into the comp plan discussion. So, I would ask everybody to put out their dream list, their, their, their big wishes, what they wanna see, and then we can little around and come up with some direction and give Brian some guidance on where we wanna be. I have more questions. How do you guys define character of the town?
I'm, I'm going there. I, I think it's, it's a, a broad mix of uses that are conforming, non-conforming, grandfathered. And I have been frustrated, and I know I've voiced this before, about our design review guidelines, because they are in much need of an update. And we have some incredibly talented architects in the valley. And what they are limited to when they look at our design review guidelines in not just the business core, light industrial as well, anything on Main Street, it has to have a false western front. So what we end up getting is like this Knott's Berry Farm kind of feel. And everybody, in order to comply with that false front, they just slap this square thing up there and call it, I don't even know what that, that's called. What's it called, Jolyon? Yeah, but, but it's, it's just unfortunate, because there, there is, you know, there's a great opportunity there for us to, to be able to do something. Maybe that's not gonna define us, but at least it will help us get, you know, maybe a, a more updated look or updated feel or something.
But also looking at like the cost, right? So when we're looking at what it costs to build things and what's attractive to developers and they're coming and what's attractive to the community, it's a working, Bellevue's character is working class. In the economic reports, there's a lot of young families, and we don't know what the new census is, but how many of those families are Hispanic, that like puts applicable to all of us, like what's going to attract everyone and not making it too complicated, right? Low barrier, but also like, yeah, what, what is that vision in capturing historical Bellevue, but also what the population is now, not two hundred just?
I think you, you know, people are correct. When I say Bellevue's character, I see it as changing, because I am, you know, our population index has changed. We've never seen housing prices this high in Bellevue, and the people that are moving into some of our upper-end housing is, is amazing, but then we also have our coworkers. I agree one hundred percent with that, is that, you know, Sisters has a great look, and they keep that western facade in Oregon. But they've done that for, since the town has been developed. I mean, this, this mix and match. I think we're ready to move on from that. It just undue, unneeded expense for a character that we're not really, we're no longer a historic mining town. We're not selling sheep downtown, and there's no longer any brothels, so. You know, there's opportunity to grow, opportunity to, it's time Bellevue, what's the word? Evolves into the twenty-first century, at least get us to the twentieth century. But.
But, you know, looking at that and speaking to the character of Bellevue, I think we also have part of our community that's resistant to change and getting into the twenty, twenty-first century and all that. So I think there's an element of the character of Bellevue that wants to honor the way that things were, but have some updated resources and access that we might not be seeing from businesses or walkability and things like that, but done in a way that's thoughtful and isn't blown out like an Aspen or even parts of Ketchum, to be honest. You know, I think we see resistance to Bellevue becoming Ketchum, right? And so how do we speak to the historical character? And I think the facade was a way to do that, design review, but how can we do that? And honor the people in the community who like things the way they were, but also understanding that we need to start progressing the city forward as well. So I think there's diversity in the character in that way, that there's a nice mix of old and new within our community. But I think there's a general part of the character that doesn't want to become all these other towns that they're not attracted to, hence why they live in Bellevue.
I would say that, you know, Bellevue, where we are right now, or maybe even more where a few years ago, we're a working-class community, this is where the labor force lives. Like it or not, I mean, there's, on the outskirts, there's some people that don't have to work, but most of the people in this community get up and go to work early, and they come home late, they work on the weekends. And the work that happens on their homes happens on the weekends, because they can't afford to hire somebody else to do it. They're doing it themselves, and they're going, there's, there's a lot of stuff that's done in this community that's not, nobody gets the permit to do the work, and they're doing it on their own, under the table and getting it done. That's the, it's like, it's lawless, almost. It's not as bad as it used to be, I think, but I think we're still about almost a lawless type of, you know, hey, we can do whatever we need to do. And I think, because I, I see it. I think we've all seen it. So I think that's something we need to, we need to, we need to turn a corner with that. And I'm not sure quite, you know, I hope, well, I got a couple ideas on how we do that. But I think something like that needs to happen. So with the, as far as the look and feel of the character, like when you talk about, you know, the facades going up downtown, if we, if you start talking about multi-level housing, you know, then maybe those facades can go away, because we do have incentive to go up, to have some, some type of a different type of architecture. That can also be a win-win, so we can provide a different character, a different feel to the downtown core.
And I think one of, one of those buildings happened on your watch with Manny's building down here. The two-story building, I'm trying to think, what's across the street from it, you know what I'm talking about? Like by U S Bank?
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and it's a two-story building, and it was And and it's a two-story building and it was um, you know, when it it first came in. For design review, you know, I was kind of looking at it and I, you know, I worked with the planner on. On writing that staff report and I'm like, you know, so explain to me how this building meets, you know, that. What is it like nineteen ten or there's a a. Yeah, like a a very specific time, you know, place and time that these buildings had to look like. But that building doesn't look anything like it, but it also met the guidelines, you know, with the ship lap siding. And the shutters and, you know, I mean, it just, it it met it and and we've had more compliments on that building, so. You know, it's a prime example, you know. I think there's opportunities for people to get creative with how that is, but, you know, I mean, the character. Bellevue is kind of its own character. So.
A while left.
I'd call it the nightstand. Kind of everything locked in.
Yeah. Yeah, everything on your nightstand, dentures, water. So did that kind of? Hey, throw another one at us.
What's working well in the business zone and what can we do better?
I think doing better would be. Like having having an actual core and defining like this is where. Restaurants are, but I guess in defining that business zone, if it's, you know, if it's actually mean mixed use, can mixed use be there with housing on top and then? You know. Businesses below, right? Um and how far can that, and how far would that go with those mixed use and then for, and then going to. Industrial, cause right now it's, yeah, when I. When people drive through Bellevue, they're like, what what is there to stop for? This is like, yeah, the question that I hear and if there's. More opportunity to stop. And you would probably stop, right? So what's working on the business zone?
I think for me, though, what's working well in the is, you know, you've got um, you know, the new um Mexican restaurant on Main Street. You know, and that's 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 nice what they've done to that building. Um and when you come in, you into town, you know, like on a Friday or Saturday. There's a lot of people that are parked, you know, so I think that's, you know, you get a handful of businesses down there. It's kind of starting to raise some of the. People coming downtown and hanging out. Um, you know, but it's a pretty small, you know, it's a couple of blocks. But they're there, you know, a spot of vacant, let's drive down Main Street. So I think that's what's going well, I think, and I do like what they did with the. Um that's over dollar building and now that's kind of changed things. So I'd say that's what's working well as far as that shift. Um and what I agree with, what can we improve? It's like, I think we need to, yeah, focus on where is our downtown. And then what can we do on some of these side street or these alley? Um access things to try to, to try to en-enhance some opportunity for smaller businesses or whatever to.
You said parking's about thirty thousand dollars a space. Is that what you said?
I think it it depends on how it's laid out. What the land values are, which is, this is part of that conversation is, you know, what could be developed there is gonna affect land prices.
How much improvement?
Yeah, exactly. Um but yeah, for surface parking, I would guess the land value somewhere in the range of ten to thirty thousand dollars. Uh you've got construction parking, you've got the land cost for the ground floor, but that's. Fifty thousand dollars a parking space from there, basically. Parking is expensive.
Yeah, I guess the question I have is then, yeah, within this business town and if there's. Yeah, the more you go underground, the more sensitive it is, the higher a developer will have to go up, right? To make that pencil, but so it's like we're, you know, wondering if there's land or space of like what rigs then besides. You know, they had a, in order to make a certain housing unit, they worked with another landowner who like. That's their parking lot for the business. Businesses, so thinking about that, right? So if it's, I don't know. And thinking about, yeah, where does everybody park and how do we make this effective? You know, cause we see what that cat brings in, right? So if we have more businesses, then that's gonna require more parking and.
Well, that kind of goes with whatever you do with with multi-family or, you know, additional housing. Is it will be need to be more parking, cause people drive in this valley. Do you live in Bellevue? You're driving somewhere, probably every single day. I mean, it'd be wonderful, a lot of people took the bus or more people took the bus. I've taken it, enjoyed occasional rides, but. I need to go someplace from A to B and I need to be there and I don't have the luxury of taking the bus. People have and will own a car in Bellevue. And so I think the idea of people, you know, not have not supplying parking for each individual um space is a big mistake.
Oh, thank you, John. I mean, we've seen Haley's issues right now. We see it right now. They're coming up with. A paid parking lot potentially to help Wood River Street. We've seen what's happened in Ketchum with the businesses being um displaced as they do. Improvements and now there's no parking. I do not wanna see Bellevue get into a situation. That we feel that we are a a foot blocking town because just as John said. We are driving every day or once a week to go get food in Twin Falls for your family to reduce costs. Or you're going to work up in Ketchum or you're somewhere in between. Until you get a light rail that goes from jackpot to uh Sun Valley. Um we're gonna be, we are going to use automobiles and we will not be a pedestrian in a bikes bicycle town. It just, you cannot carry eighty pounds of tools with you to go to Ketchum on the bus or on your bike. Uh it's just not feasible. And that's where we're at. Um so things that we can improve, what I would like to improve, diversity in our businesses. Um I I think we have some great businesses that are here in town, but um how many mechanics and auto body shops do we really need? How many? I love tacos, don't get me wrong, but how many taco shops do we need in town? Um I think we need to figure out a way to. Um incentivize diversification of um. The the businesses that we do have. Um I don't know how you limit that or how you change that, but. Um I don't think that we need to be the auto motor repair center of the valley. Um I think the shops we do have are great. Um but let's see what else we can get in here. I mean, uh let's get set down here. Let's get uh decked. Um let's just. Exactly, these businesses that. But um you know, let's, this one thing that we are hoping that with the uh resort liquor licenses. A couple of new restaurants that um cater to a higher end, other than, you know, love the homies, love going there for lunch, dinner, great atmosphere. But, you know, sometimes I wanna, you know, birthdays and anniversaries would be nice instead of having to go up to Haley or Ketchum, so.
I would say that to kind of go on that, what's working well in the business zone is I do notice we are. Attracting business investment. You know, we aren't seeing a ton of vacancies, like when a restaurant does go out. Something is interested in coming in. Um we have a Cutthroat Club who has. Kind of up the level of offering and taking a bit of a risk on a community that there wasn't proof of concept yet in. Um and is continuing to be here and invest and um kind of elevate the dining scene. So I, you know, and I know it's not in the business district, but it's in kind of that mixture like industrial zone, and I know it's a car mechanic shop. But we are a-attracting young talent to come down and open up a different style of mechanic shop that. You know, is kind of a Japanese vehicle, adventure vehicle thing, which does attract a slightly younger, more adventurous customer, so. Um I think we're positively attracting uh businesses. I think it's amazing that Davis and Broidery came down. And wanted to be in Bellevue area, and I think um what we could improve on is finding more ways to attract and incentivize and. Um, you know, support, support our businesses better um within these areas and so. Um I'm encouraged by what I see happening, but I think we need to uh. Meet these business owners with the risks they're taking with support, a little more support from the city. Um I'd like to see more urban renewal support, um cause we, that already exists and we don't have to develop that new. District. Um I'd like to see more urban renewal on our Main Street in our business. Kind of historical district zone. Um and I'd like to see uh like I'm, I'll repeat myself, I'd like to see delineation of. Uh what are, where we'd like to attract people to. So as you're coming into Bellevue, it's obvious where to stop. Um and then, of course, you'll have all the other fringe businesses that you need access, but. If people want to know where to get a coffee, where to go to dinner, where to grab a great burger, it's obvious and they're not just gonna drive by and go. I didn't see it, you know, reduce the pass through and encourage uh. More people to stop. And I think we can do that through uh leaning a little bit more on our. City and our borough.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned Borough, um because I think that there's quite a bit of money, if I'm not mistaken. I I don't know what that number is. Um that that our U R A has right now and. I think there's a great opportunity for us to try and create, to give people a a place to go, something to do, like. You know, vacating, you know, the the street, um oh, I guess it would be between. Um Cutthroat Club and the guy on the corner. Yeah. Um and and create a a little town plaza, you know, where where you've got, you know, Friday afternoons. You know, people are coming out and we, you know, maybe have some live music in there, you know, obviously this would be a summertime activity, but give people. A place to go, something to do, other than. You know, have to go to a restaurant and sit inside somewhere, you know, beautiful summer night, just, you know, do something with that. You know, you see Haley has um by the the spud, they have that giant chest set and. I mean, there's just so many things you could get creative to try and and create that sense of place and give. Give people something to do, cause we just, we're missing that. So I'd really like to see um our U R A step up. You know, and 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 get some fresh thinking and, you know, really get some some good movement. Cause I think there's a great opportunity there for us to do that.
Well, then how you guys, from there, when you drop off, you know, you know, you do have that. There there is opportunity there and to not just let it just be the hill, you know, but develop that in some way, cause you have Howard Preserve right.
Right there, right there.
I mean, some something could be done to cur- to make that connection.
Very much.
And, you know, and the one thing with that though is, and we keep on talking about, you know, I T D and their role, cause it's like, how do you? How do you maybe slow traffic down for even if it's a handful of blocks to try to. Change that character for just a little bit so that that's there, cause oh, I, you, right now, you you don't see it. But if you, there has to be, we're gonna have to be, but um some type of a.
Roundabout?
Infrastructure. That would cause, cause some change, you know, I'm not sure what that. Alright, so if you were to come to Borough and say, hey, this is a good idea, wh- what is that good idea to to do that you could make that? Start to make that shift. You know, what what kind of creative ideas?
Do, would wouldn't you think landscaping can do that well? Just because our speed limit is already twenty five. You know, it's it, it's a nice speed limit to catch people's attention with some visuals. So, you know, you look at Haley and they're kind of downtown, there's a dense amount of landscaping or lights or signage or things like that that kind of. Give you the feel. Um so, you know, just kind of looking at instead of.
But they do still struggle, struggle with capturing people coming south down to the airport because it's like a pastor, so like. Retail businesses actually capturing that business money has gone down in comparison, but the workers not spending that. Money, so like is, yeah, so I think it's more complex and just thinking twenty-five miles an hour. Like landscaping is gonna capture those people because talking to businesses on Main Street and Haley didn't struggle without figuring out. Yeah, how do you direct them?
And a couple of things that keep Bradlin around in my head are. It would be, I'd love to explore ways to not have downtown be. Uh, you know, a half mile long and two hundred feet wide. Um that, the trying to. You know, trying to to give downtown a little bit more of a of a shape than a than a strip.
Yeah, kind of condense it a little bit.
Yeah. You know, and and to to connect the two sides of Main Street better. Um, cause that, you know, I I'm a dad of young kids and crossing Main Street with. With a handful of kids is a, it's intimidating, you know.
Like on a orange coat.
You know, and more so this time of year.
It's dark.
It gets dark, it gets slick. Um and I. I absolutely don't blame people for not wanting to walk from one side of Main Street to the other. Um. You know, my my son rides the bus and uh. Crossing Main Street down by uh. Down by the country store, for him to get on the bus going northbound is, that was, that was something that that took some, took some getting used to for us for the. You know, for the idea of, of, you know. It's five lanes that are not always going twenty-five. Um. It's it's a, it's a handful. So I would love to, I'd love to find a way to uh. To not have it just be, you know, the two sides of Main Street are the are the downtown and. And you just have to cross Main Street to to access it. Um, you know, whether that's exploring the the east side of the street or the. Or up against the hill or both, you know, I think, I think both is probably the the path there.
I think Haley does it, they, their sidewalks, their junctions, they have the kind of bump outs. I think Haley's Main Street is as wide as Bellevue's, but it doesn't look as wide, cause I think they've. They've done something with the way that their their intersections are, the bump outs, so it kind of, yeah, losing the.
Oh yeah, kind of tightens that.
Well, the the parallel parking.
Kind of goes in this.
You've got sidewalk out to the actual lane of traffic.
I really, um, I'm happy you brought up kind of the density, you get kind of that expansion, cause um, you know, we've got a great bike path there. Um, we've got that, a park that we use quite often for events and things like that. Um, you know, our memorial park there is. Quite beautiful, so we have infrastructure in place to draw attention to and then there's. Sounds like, you know, great opportunity to draw attention on the west side and then we have the fabulous Howard Preserve there, so we have a lot of natural. Um and activity assets for the community that I think tie into.
Yeah.
You know, the activity of the business district, because maybe you have dinner and then you end up at the park or, you know. You grab a takeout and you picnic together, you know, there's, there's a lot of ways, you grab a couple of things from your little market on the corner and. You know, go down to the preserve and hang out the river, so there's a way to kind of create crossover between utilizing the businesses and the natural assets that we've already. Created within our community, so I love that idea.
I also wonder if there's, is there, is there a way to limit, like, so like if you, like, if you go and you expand. You make it denser, like, limit the business operating hours if they, we were to go in. To like, you know, if someone wanted to open a business and a lot that's by the park in between residential, cause I know in Boise, they. Streamline a lot of their. Like reduce traffic and keep people within their burrows, it's like, you know, a little cafe can open in like. Slaughterhouse, but it's open, it can only operate in between the hours of eight AM and three PM or things. Like that, thinking about the creativity of like, okay. Is there a way we could do that within there? Like what type of businesses would go in there that's still like. You know, keeps the neighborhood feeling like a neighborhood.
I think one thing that people have been touching on are um bringing attract, br- bringing activities that attract people to Bellevue. And so we have opportunities that we can look at in Slaughterhouse, um it started to take around a pump track out there to. Um build off of the uh E L M trails that are already out there. I'm telling them to bring somebody in their community. Um the Oppenheimer Development with the sports complex in the middle between Haley and Bellevue. That one would be a huge draw where, you know, we have multiple families and multiple sporting events coming through through the summertime. They're gonna be coming into Bellevue because. You know, they're gonna be returning down south or returning to Boise. Let's, let's just grab something in Bellevue instead of having to drive back up further. Um, you know, this one would be highly unpopular to a lot of people, but with the diversion on the, on the Bigwood for. For irrigation, we've got that giant concrete slab that uh makes fish passage difficult and we've been looking at ways.
We've got that giant concrete slab that uh makes fish passage difficult, and we've been looking at ways to renovate that. Potentially put in a whitewater park that even if it's three months, um, that we can open up down there and get activity down there. It wouldn't be a drain on Draper or that, or or Howard, it would be a great opportunity for more people to see it. We could get more use out of the river, and that would bring in a ton of people. So, I, I think we need to look big, um, I just don't, just don't discount something, because we know there are gonna be people in the community that don't want it there. But um, you know, how cool would that be? I mean, there really is no good, uh, there really isn't a lot of good access to the wood. To do something like that and be able to develop a structure that enhances irrigation. Enhances fish passage and then provides more recreation, I think it's, it's a trifecta, um.
It's been wildly successful, you know, in Garden City, you use that beautiful green belt, and restaurants, you have businesses and all that. I mean, I like, love that idea, I think I did, you know, is it all going to happen though? But does it help with an overall vision and design of what this area could be?
Yeah, it, I mean, that river is a natural asset that we're not utilizing and, and we should be. And, you know, I know there was talk, probably the last ten years, about having a whitewater park right there. So, um, you know, and that, you know, that conversation went on for quite a while and I, I can't quite recall. Why it didn't happen, but um, but I think it would be a good idea to try and resurrect that.
It's already designed, it's already been designed.
Oh, yeah, Robin, I bet Robin is crazy.
It could also help with flood mitigation too, from the runoff period.
Hey, yeah, um, yes, that was uh, well, from, that's the Wood River Way. But um, my comment is actually kind of back to Main Street, I love all the ideas that everybody's throwing out and I pretty much agree with everything. But if I'm understanding this right and looking at everything right, I believe, Brian, maybe you can answer this. That there are actually more residences in our business zone than there are businesses. And is that, I mean, to me, that seems like a non-conforming use, and how does that get switched over? I feel like adjusting some of those. To actual conforming uses would be ideal, and so maybe that's when the, that unit sells or gets free rented. I, I'm, maybe you can explain that to me.
Yeah, so there's two ways the deal of non-conforming uses. One is to go and make it conforming, because always an option as a council to take your own ordinances. Uh, the other is to, upon, it's hard to do one upon sale or change rental and things like that. That's one, we don't really have any way of tracking and monitoring those very well, um, but then also it just gets messy. Um, but when they change use, when they want to add on to the building, they want to remodel, do anything like that. That, things that require building permits is when we would say, no, you can't expand beyond what the darn ordinance statute says.
And that's, that's pretty specific, I mean, you know, when, when they say you can't expand, that means, you know, inches of your building. Hours of operation, so it's, it's pretty specific.
If you were to pass an ordinance, just say, how would you take, how would that come into effect if there was a residence that was on? Main Street in the business district and you pass an ordinance to say, no residences on Main Street, how, how does that fit?
That's the current ordinance, right, for residents. Yeah.
Well.
Beyond the need.
What, say it again?
You can have an A D U if you have a business.
But there are residences on Main Street that existed before that ordinance.
Yeah, so they are non, non-conforming uses.
Which are protected, some.
Yeah, so they are protected, so that's why it exists.
You can't expand it, you know, and uh, it burns down, I think you could probably rebuild it, um.
Okay.
So there's no real way to take.
We're just not encouraged, like, by the way we zone it, we're not encouraging it, we want, we want those to phase out, but it's just not happening right now.
Encouraging phasing out is the way that is, uh, typically done by restricting how much they can invest in the property for that. That's your question, right?
Uh, yeah, definitely, um, I guess. Yeah, it does, um, just seems like we have a lot of room for new business to move in right now. And a lot of residences on Main Street, and I just want to keep that in the back of our minds as we're having this conversation.
Brian, you had very many people contact you about those three building pads that are up by um. The little strip mall up there.
Uh, between Atkins and Family Dollar, um, no.
Because there, I mean, they're built, the infrastructure's in there, there's gotta be.
Yeah. That more on the Atkins side, or is that more?
Coming north of like Tortilla Factory.
Yeah, like that.
There's been on and off interest in that one.
Yeah.
But it always goes off.
Yeah.
And what turns them off to it?
I don't know. I, a- according to a real estate agent that I know, had a client that was looking at it, part of it is zoning, and what they could put there. That I don't know, I, I, I know. Well, no, I, one of the clients that I spoke with. I know that there was one person that, they have a, they do some type of manufacturing, but they, like, right now, they do it from their home. So it's in a contained space, so it does not, you know, like, there's no noise that impacts neighbors or anything like that. And so, but they wanted to expand their business a little bit, and that was a location they were looking at, but it doesn't fit the zoning. I don't want to jump ahead or change the direction when anything's going, but a question I have, that I feel like we haven't had any opportunity to discuss with each other is. You know, how does everyone feel about density in the historic business area versus density in the general business zone? Because I feel like that was kind of the general hot topic of a lot of this zoning ordinance. So, we want to, you know, and that may be not be appropriate for tonight, but we can hear market for wherever it is in your timeline of discussion. I guess I, I, that's what I'm trying to kind of figure out, is what, what we think would be best for the community. And in this, if we're talking about creating a little density out in terms of uh recreation and drawing people in. And I'm landscaping and all of that, are we wanting to add housing so that there's more foot traffic there? Or are we wanting to leave that less living dense and more historic? And allow a little bit more of the building density to happen outside of that historic corridor? I'm just calling it that, because that's how my brain is referencing it.
I mean, based off of just housings are built in research, you know, you want housing within. The business area for like eyes on the street. If you have an empty business core, it does attract more crime, like studies do show when you just have all businesses. It does promote eventually things of that nature. Um, but I believe like, yeah, like, when you live up above a bar. You're more likely to go down to that bar more frequently, right? Or if you're living, you know, three blocks away, I know if like I was, if I live three blocks from Cutthroat Club, I would be there a lot more. You know, so that's just my, from the things that I've read and the research that I've looked at. I, I believe it's all, you know, within like a historic core, there should. Yeah, it's like talking about the density, like what, what is gonna be included in that density, housing, restaurants?
Yeah.
No specifics of shops.
When I look at this, as you look at this map here, I mean, the, the historic district on Main Street is not even a block long.
Yeah. I'm sorry, let me say.
Or, and, but, but I know you're.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Um, and so I would, I would think that you would, uh, you want your density more toward the core. And, and less dense further away you go. I'm not sure if there's a gradation input in this or not, but that, overall, I would think, yeah, I'm gonna, if I'm gonna live in one of these places close by. I'm gonna go, you know, walk to grocery store, walk to the bar, walk to the restaurant, whatever, um, because it's right there. Um, and, and I think it's just, it's gonna create, again, is, to me, you, you create more vertical, you know. Create a little more structure uh to the downtown and, and maybe give it a little bit of, you know, a, a short feel like there's something going on. So, and I think that is gonna only come through, you know, mu- multi-story, you know, and the multi-story is gonna be the residentials in the. In the second, third floors, I would think, so, that's, that's my two cents.
I guess I had a, just a, a different vision and a different opinion on that, is leaving kind of that, whatever. I'll keep calling it that historical downtown, whatever section we deem appropriate from, you know, maybe it's like cedar to pine. Just to put bookends on it, that being a little more historical, um, you know, business centric, expanding out a little bit more. And then allowing more density as we get into light industrial, more A D U style, like, or workforce housing. Um, and not going up as much in a historical area and going up a little further out. But, you know, because I look at other kind of towns, communities, I think of like Hyde Park and Boise, and they didn't really go up. They kept a lot of their beautiful historical buildings, and they have great cafes and walking areas, and you've got great houses. And then you get more density as you kind of go outside of this cute little historic zone. Um, I guess I, I saw opposite. Yeah, and not, not based on, that's based on opinion, not necessarily all the research, but.
And I kind of agree with you in a lot of ways, because if we could build the downtown core with the historic, where it has all these great shops and stuff. But the density is to what they actually need, the grocery store and access to the bus lines. And so you have at the north end of town, course closer to Atkins, where someone can walk to the grocery store, carry two bags back to their apartment. And they have a higher density there, but then on the weekends, uh, it's not that far to walk downtown and have a good time. But for Monday through Friday, I'm worried about getting food on the table and I'm worried about getting the bus to go to work. Um, while we're getting on the highway and get to work, so, um, I think there is a place for both. But with our current, uh, you know. Our, our needs right now, I think being closer to the access, accessible goods and services is more important than being downtown. Um, just to have the nightlife and then, I'm not really a nightlife, but.
Are you thinking more like a town square?
Yeah, yeah, more like a town square, and then the density I'm referencing is like more workforce housing, you know, just the opportunity of some of our. Light industrial, light industrial, other styles of business that we could see going in potentially where, you know, developers are putting in business units down low. And people living up top, but that's not necessarily in the town square area that we've kind of been talking a little bit about.
You know, I would wonder, I maybe ask Brian this question, throw you on the spot, but, I mean, what kind of businesses are going to be interested? In having, you know, business on the main floor and then some housing above, I mean, that's the, that's the type of thing. It's what, what we want versus what business and industry wants. And what then, what we can allow, because we can, we can zone ourselves into a corner, and it's not gonna work. Or, you know what I'm saying, it's like, what's, what's, let's work in other places.
There's, I think what you're referring to is more of a live-work style, where it is one, single ownership vertically. Uh, like a townhouse where you live upstairs and then have an office space downstairs, which is a product that exists and is successful in certain contexts. And it is typically professionals, attorneys, architects, like tenants, people with fairly limited need for. Like physical meeting space, but occasionally have that.
Yeah.
Um, but then you can also just have mixed use, where it is ground floor commercial, and then above that is residential. And those are totally independent things, maybe same ownership, maybe condominiumized, however that works, it's up to the owner. Uh, but it would be different renters than in this, in this apartment. Even structure.
I mean, typically what they're finding when you build apartment buildings or workforce housing, or let's say it's considered affordable housing away from everything else. And you don't mix it, and you're just creating, well, food deserts, um, more drug use, more crime. And there's also, there's just certain incidences throughout the valley of certain places that have been built away from everything. But it then produces, it's better to mix things and have people surrounding each other rather than build out. Like the Garden City approach, and that type of development of what you're talking about is being proven to not be the best for mental health. Not being best for community, it's, and then also property values, the further that you build out, that you're bringing down value. Of what we can be capturing within here, like the studies um at the I H F A conference. And they show that like if you build out a restaurant, let's say, um, and further out compared. Comparatively, if you built that and used that entire lot and then built up closer to a business core, and there's different graphs throughout the country that show this. It brings down the value of the property, so to incentivize, you know, developers, lot owners, you know. It would only take, I think, the value from them if we go out further in infrastructure.
I look at though, that the A D U's already exist in the business area, so we're not talking about taking away housing. We're talking about how high up and how dense of the housing we want to allow. Um, so when this discussion did happen, there's one A D U allowed in the business district, we talked about adding another. And then it turned into a larger density discussion, um, and so my, you know, my reaction to that is, of course, keeps, keeps some living. Keep, you know, people might want to live above their restaurant or things like that, but do we need to go up multiple stories and have multiple apartments? And things like, and more mixed use in that, you know, town center, or is that better mixed in throughout the highway? Because we do have a sprawling business district already, so is that better mixed in through our already existing sprawling business district? Um, which would then, you know, you're not, you're not pocketing the, the housing, you know, just to the north and the south. Because it already does exist in that town center, you're just limiting the density in the town center and allowing more density to spread outward.
Um, I would comment that I really like the high-density ideas, and I don't think that we would be degrading any of the business district. By allowing the mixed use, um, I guess that was my point with the amount of residential already littered down Main Street. Is that we're already have basically mixed use all in our business zone. Um, and allowing some mixed use on Main Street with the high density would be amazing.
Public comment? I don't have any problem. May I paint a picture for you guys of my opinion? I like the mayor saying, or the words that you kind of use, we're, we're the gateway town, right? And I've lived in a variety of places that were the gateway communities, uh, the first one I'm thinking of is Door County in Wisconsin. Once you get past, you know, Surgeon Bay, all kinds of little resort towns, right? And people cruise through Surgeon Bay, that's the gateway town, that's the working force town when I was around there. And that's what Bellevue is, the gateway town that you go right on through, so they work, gateway, let's close the gate, stop them down, slow them down a little bit coming through. I'm making a joke there, right? So how we figured if we do this, architectural length. So you can go up there and search and find all kinds of examples of ball boats, choking it in a physical way, opening it up in certain ways. And by default, the human body's gonna respond to that, be, no matter what, we're still gonna have whatever, seventy thousand vehicles a day come through, that's gonna happen. The valley's gonna bitch, because it's gonna slow them down, it's your town, it's our town, let's slow them down, all right? So then, next thing is, we live here, so those people that live here, we want, the picture I'm painting is, we want it to be, whatever you want to call the historic core. I've got a vision, it's not, it isn't that version, but if you want to be true to the eighteen nineties and nineteen ten, let's do it, but not approve the architecture of the past. Through the design review we have, but be strict on it, and therefore hold our guns, be proud and say, if you're building in this section, you've got to pass design review with that character. The money solution, it'll figure itself out somehow, in my heart, I believe that, so I'm gonna now paint the picture, I'm just starting. Imagine if it was limitless funds, wherever it comes from, development teammates, right, I'm being Christmas here. Uh, wherever the Borough is, or wherever federal funds can come from, no problem, I T D, look what Ketchum's doing, choking it down and getting rid of parking on Main Street. That's I T D, they did it, all right, you just have to raise your hand and get in line, maybe I'm wrong, you know, I don't know, but it happens elsewhere. So therefore, there's a way to design and show. Maybe I'm wrong, you know, I don't know, but it happens elsewhere. So therefore, there's a way to design and choke down Main Street. We've got to do that. It screams airport runway right now, right? So you can change that. I like our historic lives, but they're not dark side compliant. We need art benches. We need vegetation. We need something that has character. Because when you're in Wisconsin and Minnesota and you have these lake towns, you're by default looking at this town because the people are walking and hanging out. We're not gonna be a Ketchum. We're not gonna be a lake resort town, but we can be our own version of that. Now we get to the fun stuff. Byla, uh, landscape architecture firm, handful of years ago, did some studies for the city of Haley. They probably got paid for it, but there's other ways to spend that. Do a competition, get free design, the winning competition, send it out to architecture schools and land planning schools, give them a thousand bucks, five thousand bucks. You're gonna get tons of free design. Alley behind Mahoney's or wherever, you know, you drop down to the park on the dirt path. Amphitheater, cut into the hill, make your town square on your alley between the restaurant that you just talked about and so forth. Do the pathway that connects like Ketchum explored. Doesn't mean Ketchum did it right, but we can learn from them. I was involved on Fifth Street, I think it was called by the Mexican restaurant of Java. You come up across Main Street and I was the architect that did the first version of that little corner park by Atkinson's, which is then where their um farmer's market went, where they have little concerts, they do the yoga stuff. We can do our own version of that, but expand it beyond just that core with connector things. Now take the core going north and south. I'm a huge advocate of all the density you can get downtown. The people, the walk, we're flat. You can still walk and you can bike ride, right? We're not crazy hilly. We're like Haley. That's a good thing for getting around. I think you need, and it's gonna be hard to get a lot of businesses, right? We aren't that same tourist town, but I would have my architecture in town, alright? I'm sorry, my architecture firm in town. I owe you a business license to be legitimate business in this town, so I need some back money to still get out of my budget, alright? So therefore, I'm in town. It's professional firms that are local people that live here and work here. You'll have a certain amount of retail stores. We already have plenty of restaurants, right? Now, this is where I'm gonna end. I'm gonna point at you. You know the expression, build it and it will come, alright? Right now, I think we're afraid, alright? I think you need to invest money, find that free money from the federal government, get those designs and imagine if Main Street just screamed the sidewalks curved, gutters, lighting, vegetation, master plan. If it was there, developers would line up to plug into it. It's like a socket waiting to have a plug in it, you know? Versus I think, we're thinking of, well, let the developers do it, or we're afraid of doing it, but will they do it and do it right? Tell them how to do it, therefore give them the framework that they have to plug into to do it. But you have to invest and show that you've created the framework. I've gotta believe the free money's there for whatever you call the uh, the USDA or something has these strange funding things for small rural urban towns to improve themselves. We could tell the story about our Main Street needing to be improved and vitalized and for developers that can help us get money if we plug into what your plan is, you know? Like give us better financing and so forth. So if you can get it, I'm trying to say, gosh, we could be cute for four blocks, healthy and vital for the whole mile and a quarter that we actually are. And walking in this town is an awesome thing that we need to capitalize on. We can. I don't know. Is that good, optimistic? Hope so.
No, it's on fire with what I've heard um from a couple of their developers. It's like, you lay out the plan and then we we conform to it, but unless we have an idea of what you want here, we don't have an idea of what to put in. And so we can throw you a few things and then we have to go through Strayhorn and that also happened because of the recession, but Strayhorn started, what, in two thousand two and it took almost seventeen, eighteen years for that to.
Two thousand eight is when they annexed.
Yeah, so we see how long that took, but we have never given anybody an exact plan of, okay, here's our economic development plan. Here's where we wanna see this business district look like and provide, um, we talk about sideboards all the time, provide sideboards and tell them what we wanna see here. And then they can bring us um the architecture and the design plans and it'll knock our socks off. So, um, I've heard it one on one, so I appreciate you bringing it back up.
Thank you for that, for your speak. I love the fun that I'm hearing and seeing you guys do. They work such awesome.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a, a quick thought. A lot of that happened up in Sun Valley in Elkhorn. I own a, involved a bunch of little old condos in the village. You know, they have a footbridge. They had built that back in the seventies, but they put an infrastructure, you know, stores, restaurants. And you talk to anybody who's lived in Sun Valley in the last thirty years, they talk about the glory days. When the symphony started.
Wasn't there an ice rink in the, in the village?
Nice ring there. That's not gonna be condos. I am, only I will bring it in this. I've got a bunch of older, three hundred eighty-two square foot condos in the village. Perfect. Uh, for one or two cup, for one couple or one guy and I'm in the process of selling them. They're all in good shape. Where I'm going is when I first started looking at the project on Rofford Road, I wanted to build eight units. And we got into density problems. We had to have twelve, so I can only build six. And then I was gonna put a parking, uh, what do you call it, lean-to parking, I'm thinking of. Yeah, carports behind. Listening to you now, I'd like to see maybe with density is do the whole block and it's, and do the work, live and some larger retail on the first floor. And I mean odd retail, I got a call from a furry that wants to get off of the side street and get out where she can, you bring your old fur and she has a collar this week. But where I'm gonna go is why have a carport? When you've got the building on Main Street, why can't the carport have density housing above? Still have the carport and with that beautiful westward view. Um, that's what I'm basically asking for is density. And where you can get a lot of crowd and as we know, crowds create their own energy. When I use crowd, I mean, that's a very similar word, but you really, it was extremely discouraging the last many, many months coming here. Uh, talking about reducing and forcing it down and it just doesn't make any sense. And I keep referring to a project that on Morning Size, I think it is, and hasn't sold one thing. So we're built, it has bad exposure. And I try by looking for one sign that says pending.
So one down on countryside?
Yeah. It's everything about it's wrong. It's not, I don't want that to happen here. It's certainly not to me. If we got a carport, let's build tight density as they did, you know, finish up on Sun Valley, go back to Ketchum Village. In uh, Elkhorn Village, it was like eighty-six units. They were hotel rooms, actually. Now they're developed in the condos, well, one bedroom studios and studio lots. But what brought them there is gone. You can't buy a Coca-Cola in the sun. There's not a Coca-Cola machine. There's a post office, you can buy spanners. And Elkhorn uh Golf Club is open, but there's, there's nothing there. They built it, it wasn't supported and it disappeared. Now it's come back. The Elkhorn is the place to be in the Sun Valley area. They've got better exposure to the sun. Absolutely nothing. Not one thing. So that's what I'd say, if we're gonna build it, build it dense and not be caught with the seventies concept that failed in Elkhorn.
Um, I wanna add one more, please. But don't put a big apartment building, uh, like the one by the ice rink in that decorative community core. That, that's a conflict, right? The live work or the mixed use that could and should be done in that environment, cause more bodies are supporting that core. But as you move outward, then maybe you can do sole apartment buildings.
And I'm, I'm talking about four blocks that I wanna protect, like four to five blocks max.
But maybe that's the gem, it's the heart.
Yeah, maybe the gem, but not, you know, a hotel, of course not a hotel, but like an apartment building that's blocking the views that we're seeing in that, some of our other communities, like just a small little section that, you know, still has the A D U capability, but doesn't, you know, it has density in terms of activity and landscaping and vibrancy, but not, we're not going three or four stories up right there.
Elkhorn thing, I went to architecture school and my master's was on resort development. And I was caught up in the Disneyland version of what resort development was. And Elkhorn was the textbook version of that. Therefore, I would have been guilty in my career of, well, you tried to do that and there's a reason it died, right? It's off the beaten path and it's fake, alright? And so therefore, you're not fake. You're a downtown historic. You know, that no matter what, this group of people are passing through every day and we've got a, a community around it that is tart, you know? So it's nothing like Elkhorn and therefore, believe in your town, find that jam money, capitalize on the core. Yeah, thank you.
I, I do have to say, when I was the planning director here and I would see Jolion come up on my caller I D, I mean, I would really like, okay, this is gonna be a commitment. But it, it was that same energy and, and all these great ideas. And I mean, it just energized me. And, you know, hopefully P and Z and City Council kind of share that same vision that, you know, we have a great opportunity right here. There's just so much we can do with it. And, and maybe being afraid of changing is, is what's holding us back. But, you know, and I know a lot of people are, you know, not in favor of us changing anything, but.
Oh, we'll all be gone at some point. And this town will grow. This town will change. We just have to do it. I didn't join P and Z to pretend that we're gonna keep it the way that it was.
Right.
That's the deal, then I'm outta here.
Yeah.
So if we wanna continue to grow, then let's start changing.
So Brian, bring it to us.
Bring it.
And I don't know just how difficult this is as far as design, but it is to, and I like the idea of, you know, trying to bring, you know, younger college university students or whatever to come, broach ideas, but to like, um, just said, okay, what would it look like if it was built out? And versus, you know, with the different ways, if it was zoned one way versus another and just so we can see it graphically. So then it would be like, yeah, that's what we need. Because right now, we're, we're probably all closer to the same page than we, than we're not. But then it's just, but, you know, we're, we're all just kinda maybe seeing it from a little bit of a different angle. And to see it, you know, say, you know, the, not a three D rendering, but you know, see if we could do something that, I don't know, I said, I'm not sure how expensive it is, how challenging it would be to do something or, or find a different community that's done something like that. Say, this is what we need. And then we can say, yeah, we need to, then we go, Brian, write the code for that and we'll prove it. Or, or shift this, this around so we can, you know, um, so we can get, get what it is that we want.
No, I get that, for me, a visual is much better because I have, then I have a vision in my head to work with. And just went through it recently, like in Sun Valley, St. Thomas is looking at doing some work there on their campus to en- enlarge, you know, the area around the church for, for other needs that they have. And while it's not something that they're going with, the architecture firm they're working with basically did this visual. I was like, okay, then they said, this is not what it's gonna look like. But we created something so that you have something to look at and say, not this, but I want this.
Going back to, you know, that there is an echo in the community of people not wanting to change. I think, I think I understand that a lot of us are here to help um usher change. I think when I look at this, so I think I always like to see if there's a way we can find that would honor the sentiment of people who want to respect history while also changing at the same time. And I think that that's, change is good, but history is kind of part of the character of Bellevue. Um, you know, the mining culture and, you know, the facades, as silly as they could be, I think that, that's kind of part of the soul of Bellevue. And so I think just the thoughtful changes, we continue to have these discussions and you know, understanding that there is a big part of the community that doesn't want to see crazy amounts of change. And how do we respect that desire with the need for change at the same time? And, and I, and I know it's delicate and I know it's just something I wanna be aware of.
And I agree with you, but I, I also wonder with some of them, how, how much of not wanting a change is seeing what is changing north of us? And that's the reason they don't want to change.
Tammy? You're out the quiet back there.
I'm just listening. May I? So Tammy Davis for the record, and I own two thirteen on Main Street in Bellevue. So the material for stores located in it and I live at three hundred South Street in Bellevue. And thank you, I was just voted in onto council, so I look forward to being at the table again. But I, I guess I would like to echo the thought, and this was something that came up on council many times in years past. And, and I can't say that, I guess, when we go to build a home, right? When we have ideas and we're planning, like what ha- has happened here, we, we don't just, just talk about our ideas and then try to, you know, like, I need you to just do the flooring. And you have no clue what I really want you to do, but I'm gonna tell you as you move along, I, I need you to, you know, start with the foundation. But I'm not really sure, maybe he should start first. I don't know, right? So, but I know we all need to work together, but nobody works together without the plans. Nobody works together without the drawings, without the vision. And that is one of the things that the city of Bellevue had always historically been afraid to do is create that vision, because maybe they would be held to it, right? Because maybe, and then they would say, well, we don't have any money to do that, so we can't do that. And that's what's preventing us. That's what prevented them from doing it. And so I appreciate that.
Okay, or adding on to that, or maybe by having that vision, then people who are against the change will say, oh, that's what you wanna do. Okay, I can believe with that.
That's exactly where I was going with that. So then, for all the fear, we could, you could, we could also incorporate the concerns. Right? We could also incorporate the, the historical concerns or the, um, preserve that, you know, preserve that feeling that they think why they moved here, why we live here, why we stay here. There is a way to preserve it, but if they can't see it, people don't wanna support it quite as well. So establishing that vision, creating the vision, creating the plans that people can see and buy into and know that it's reflective of too, the comprehensive plans and the things we say were important. Build it up in a conceptual way, for sure.
If Sean's open to chatting, knowing that Sean owns a business right on the area we're talking about, I would just love to hear what Sean has to say.
Uh, hey, how you doing? I, for some reason, I got no video, but I'm, I could listen to you. Um, I, I think that density, for example, be a lot between uh, uh, Spashin Dash and Tetra Fair. It could be a perfect example of multi-use. Condoms, condos or apartments on a top and, and uh, and uh, places of business in front, be a perfect example of that. And I, I truly believe density downtown is key. But no, no one wants to drive or wanna work or, or they play. He, you know, it's really the key to this whole operation. And I, I don't know how to do it, but correctly, but it's, it's the way to go.
We are processing what you said. Thank you, Sean.
One more question. Anytime you change anything in the city, it's gonna have unexpected consequences. What should we expect if we start changing the business?
Only thing I have. Traffic. You know, I live at the south end of Bellevue and that left turn and then the crawl through, through town. Like I changed my working hours. I told my guys, like, we're starting at seven and we're done at three thirty, cause leaving the house, leaving the house at, at six thirty, I can be in, you know, in Ketchum or in Elkhorn at, at six fifty, six fifty-five. If I leave the house, it, not, not as much lately, but uh, for a while there, if I left the house at, at six forty-five, it was after eight by the time I got up there. It's like the amount of, the amount of traffic that, that bottleneck's going through, going through Bellevue. You know, when we add density to, to the middle of town, it's just going to be that much more of a, of a bottleneck. And I don't know what we do.
I, I mean, externally thinking about what will happen, but like thinking, you know, what Chris said, Mr. Mayor Johnson said was thinking bigger, like thinking about, you know, I talked to a lot of people who were here in the seventies, it's like everybody who lived in Bellevue worked in Bellevue. Everybody who lived in Haley worked in Haley, Haley, but if, if there's not opportunity to live and work and have your life and. live and work and have your life and that we don't think about like big picture on that, there hasn't been opportunity. Like there, you know, everybody goes north, but like, what can we do big picture wise to capture businesses to keep people here or, right? Or like, or maybe it's people coming from Twin Falls and it's like, we're just going to Bellevue. We're not going north anymore, there's opportunity and there's my opportunity in Bellevue, I don't have to go to Ketchum anymore.
Or imagine.
So how can we be better than?
Morning traffic, like people coming from Haley to work in Bellevue.
Yeah, so why don't we think about that? Let's just, let's, yeah, let's just think that, like, how, like, yeah, how, how, how is Bellevue, like, I know, like, external impacts? Like my external is like, how can we, we need better? How can we do things better than Ketchum, Haley? Like look at all of their mistakes and how do we capture that and make, like, long-term, right? Like what John was saying, like, we'll all be gone eventually, but like, what can we do for our future? Like my daughters, if they wanna stay here their whole lives, what do I want for them? Like, what would they want? What would they yell at me for when they're maybe, why didn't you do this?
What do you think?
Think this has been a great conversation.
Well, and I think too, that with that is, you know, we're gonna talk about, or is the parking, you know, as it goes, does get bigger, it's more traffic, but there is also parking and I, there's so much to learn, I think, from Haley and from Ketchum. And we've got to look at that, at their, at them and to see what they learned, what they did, what mistakes they made and how we can do better. Not like we're gonna eventually turn into Haley, but guess what? We're eventually gonna get bigger, we're eventually gonna grow. So it's like, we gotta take our head out and stand and realize that that's what change is. And so we've been prepared for it.
Right, also just like, like bigger picture thinking about transportation in general and having that right and all these conversations I had. Um, I had a meeting with Conflantia, but like where, what it costs to get one bus, right? And how long it takes to get that bus? I don't know if you all know, but right now people are being turned away from getting on buses during peak time, they're at capacity. So if we don't have the transportation to support people driving, I know there's a lot of people who are like, I don't wanna do it. But if you don't change behaviors, because guess what? If we just, let's say the population grows and we keep on adding all those cars, how much carbon, how much we're going to be increasing if we don't change our behaviors and we all think, yes, everybody's gonna have a car always. And if we're gonna do things this way, we're just gonna be living in smog, just like the city. So, I mean, long-term, thinking about that and how we work with transportation as well. Part of the larger plan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we wanna miss the opportunity to still address, um, walking, biking opportunities. We, just because I said, everybody has a car.
You never have to drive it every day.
Exactly, yes. We still need to amplify our walking and biking opportunities.
If there was an express bus to Ketchum, I would take it.
Yeah, and.
If there was a thirty minute bus, I would get on that bus. On the weekends, like thinking, how many drinking and driving people would get off the road by having quick, quick efficient transportation?
Well, I think, you know, we've, we've talked a lot tonight about, you know, the mistakes that have been made, you know, from our neighbors to the north. But I, I think there's also been some good things that, that have been done. Yeah, and so I just wanna make sure that, um, it, it's, it's a broad view of what, what we're looking at. I mean, because there's great opportunities for us to learn from some of those things, the good things and that.
So true. She won't call back.
And I even answer when you call, always.
One, one other thing I think we need to do is we need to develop a relationship with IT. Cause I'm not sure, because I remember talking with Diane, you know, for a long time and I know, you know, I think everybody has their own set of challenges with them, every community does. We need to develop a relationship with them because they're on the corridor.
Right.
And what happens on that Main Street, you know, all has to get approved.
Very much.
And there's, there's, like it or not, we're in America. May not be very good, but we have got to figure out how to work with them.
Yeah.
Um, and get that relationship down so we can figure out how to address, there's all these great ideas we've thrown out there. So ITD can show them down like that, from what I understand. So we need to figure that out.
Yeah.
I mean, what, like part of Ketchum and how they were able to do that Main Street is they came up with the funds and the money to do that. That's how they got control of doing that. But I think it's definitely like, we have to do a workshop with them and if not, we need to figure out.
It's not just a workshop.
Yeah.
It's, it's a relationship.
Yeah.
And we've made some big improvements the last couple of years, especially the last twelve months with them. Um, I've gone down there to three meetings with them, we're going to meetings with the, uh, commissioners where they're involved. Um, we're showing up at the table now, which has not happened in a long time. So we are making that, we are gonna continue on that. Having Casey on our streets, a, a good competent street supervisor has been key. Um, as we get a public works director coming in hopefully sometime soon, keeping up that relationship with them, being at those meetings, inviting them up here, and this is a big thing. Uh, we did a resort cities coalition meeting and they came up because they were part of that discussion and they had to drive to Bellevue. And when you bring, um, there's lead engineer, area four, and the lead manager of area four through town, and they're going, oh crap, this is a bad situation. They're, they're looking, looking at changes now. And so we have, we do have stuff coming down the pipeline, we will continue to push on them and we will continue to develop that relationship. But I think we have initiated the best relationship that we have had with them in the last three to five years.
We're in progress.
Yeah. They always are. And we have a board member now that's north, north of Ketchum and he drives through here every day. So he sees it and he, he takes the complaints and, um, he returns phone calls, so it's been great.
May I share something else?
Please.
Well, two things, I do like mixed use, I do own that business on Main Street. And if I could put an apartment or some extra offices or apartment building over the top of it, I would like that. But, um, as far as external impacts that we could anticipate or, or look forward to potentially in planning is enforcement, like the need to, not mean enforcement, but yes, I do mean enforcement. Where if we're gonna have a certain zone and we're gonna allow certain things and then not allow other things, we need to be consistent in our application of, of whoever's doing it, it doesn't matter. And, and really have the ability to follow through and, and either enforce, not shepherd it and make sure that it is followed through.
So we had that for a long time when we had, when I was here, um, working and she followed up on it. We did have a lack the last three years.
And I don't, I don't know.
No.
It's not on just Dottie.
But it, it's a, it's a part of the puzzle because.
Yeah.
Bringing Brian on board as the, you know, director to review everything, to go through it. And then we need to get back to eventually someday to get back to that code enforcement officer. Uh, but we need one that's actually diligent at what he does and competent. Um, unfortunately, I don't think we have that person, it wasn't the right fit for our community. So it's, it's piecing back the pieces that we lost and, and turnover has changed. Um, it's been a lot of rebuilding the last few years. And so as we get everything built back out, the department's, um, staff properly, we can start pushing the code. I mean, we saw much pushback we got just from doing, uh, cleaning the alleys and wanting to clean the trees and clean the debris out of the alleys. Um, some people loved it, some people hate it. Anything that we're gonna do, people are gonna love and people are gonna hate, it's just part of this business. I mean, you know, I thought this, this seat was about leading the city somewhere. No, it's just about listening to people's rights and complaints and then just doing the best we can to keep it running. So, um, we're getting there, we're putting the pieces together, but it is about a concern. We see it all around town and it's trying to be equitable and, and fair and, and treating everybody with the same. Saying that, if this person puts up a fence without a permit, then the neighbor puts one up with a permit. And he's like, why do you have to pay the permit fee? Well, you know, can we tear it down? We make them pay the fee. Oh, we have one, then we're telling them to cut it down to the proper height, then they had to pay the permit fee and we're getting after it. And we wanna do that evenly across the city on all our code and all our enforcement and all developments. So there's an even playing field, everybody feels that they're being treated in the same fashion and we're not just picking at somebody because we think that they're a bad neighbor. We're getting there.
I'd like to get, I'm gonna leave in a minute, but I'd like to leave you with a developer's little point. I come, I keep looking at Bellevue, nineteen eighty-one, I grew up in Seattle. We have a Bellevue there too.
Oh, there?
And Bellevue for the longest time was across the floating bridge. And it was known for blueberry farms and a little small mall called Bellevue Square that was owned by Ken Prinum. And it was a rural community. And what they did there was incredible, they looked to technology and software. And I'm sitting here now and I'm not talking, this could ever be a Bellevue, but there you are, sucked the life out of Seattle.
Oh, yeah.
And, and it's not safe in Seattle. I grew up in Seattle, I walked downtown Seattle all hours of the night, you know? It's a difficult place. But the one thing that I'm thinking of, all of a sudden I see a small version of Work Live, or reworks kind of a place where the people that are working remotely have a place to come. Uh, I think in what you're talking about, it's an excellent idea, because I can start counting a lot of people who remote work. But with remote work, that is a great siphoning to bring people in from other areas, uh, not only Boise, but Washington State and whatnot. Because you have Sun Valley up the road. But I don't think Sun Valley or Ketchum is a place for suddenly a conglomerate of little rework spots where you run a space. Might be something to think about, clean industry type, a lot of people, and then you create, you know, the, what goes around behind. So I'll be talking to an architect here. But again, it all runs around death, density. And whether they live there or rent there and just come and live somewhere else, at least puts them on the docket of the industry. So with that, excuse myself, thank you.
Well, that, Phil Kishwin, that is our consultant for Bura, one of the city manager at Bellevue, Washington, when that whole change occurred. That's a resource we can lean.
Nice.
Yeah, so I just, uh, next steps, I've got a survey drafted up, I'll probably tweak it a little bit based on the conversation tonight, get some feedback from the community at large. A couple of outreach events, I wanna have one for the general community and one more geared towards the business. And then we'll have more work sessions with P and Z Council. Um, yeah, let me know if you wanna join one or you wanna do it independently or, or if we could probably squeeze that in. Um, aiming for having it drafted and ready for public hearings and order and seduction in late February so that we can get, uh, outreach to people who are interested in developing and doing things, uh, before summer. When they actually want to start digging stuff. Um, so yeah, that's, uh, the end of the event for the night. So if you guys got any questions or anything else to talk about.
Thank you for putting, putting us all together.
Did you get enough information from us?
Yeah, I mean, I got a lot of.
I know we have a lot of notes and stuff, but I think, you know, we're, we're, we're on the same page, but we're not, but we're really close and, um, we got enough to work with.
I think so.
Okay.
I think that bringing the two groups together was really effective personally and, you know, while we could have separate sessions, I think we could get more done collectively, probably my feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm really, I'm really glad that it's came to be. And nice job putting this together.
Yes.
You know, and all this, it really does help a lot. Quite well done.
All right, thanks, Brian. Anything else for anybody else? All right, um, I take a motion to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
Tony, you were probably just like, dude, dude, all over, sorry.